Good evening, and welcome to Senator Sanders Student Town Hall Meeting with middle and high school students from all over Vermont. My name is Catherine Becker Van Haste, and I'm Senator Sanders' State Director. We're so glad to have you with us tonight to talk about the challenges that are facing young Vermonters. We're going to hear from a group of middle school students, followed by a Q and A, and then we're going to hear from a panel of high school students and answer questions from high schoolers. For folks who are attending through our WebEx platform, you can just type any questions you have right in our Q and A feature. We will then call on you and bring you live to ask your question of the Senator. If you're on the phone with us tonight, you can press star three. That's going to let us know that you have a question. If we're able to call on you, we're only going to be able to call on you by the first six digits of your phone number, so listen closely for that, those three numbers after 8:02. And for all of you joining via livestream, welcome and thanks for being with us. Now, let me introduce you to your Senator, Bernie Sanders.
Katie, thank you very much. Let me thank all the folks around Vermont and the country who are watching the program tonight. And mostly, let me thank the young people who are our panelists. And it's, I don't have any long speeches to make here. Bottom line is, the pandemic has had a huge impact on every person in Vermont and I think every person in America. Many working people lost their jobs during the process or have gotten new jobs. Many college students have seen their education disrupted. Many elderly people, who are most vulnerable, I think, to the virus have kind of been isolated, unable to interact with their grandkids, their kids, their friends and their family. So it's had an impact on our economy, on our mental health. Mental illness is way, way up. Alcoholism is up, drug addiction is up, domestic violence is up. So this has been a very, very rough period for everybody. But I think sometimes when we talk about the impact of the pandemic, we are not focusing enough on young people who perhaps have been hardest hit by what is going on today. And tonight, basically, what we're going to do is have young people from throughout the state of Vermont, now more rural areas, the north, the south, our larger towns, just talk about what their experience has been in terms of their social activities, in terms of education, in terms of economics, whatever, what their experience has been during the pandemic, and what they think maybe the federal, state, local government, others can do to improve the situation. And we're going to start with some eighth graders from around the state. And we have three eighth graders. Lee Blanco is from Brownington, Grady Hagenbow. Boo is from Crossbrook Middle School in Waterbury, and Jada Perry is a seventh grader at Proctor Junior Senior High School. So we're going to start off with Lee Blanco from Brownington Central School. Lee, thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you for having me, Bernie. As you said, my name is Lee Blanco, and I go to Brownington Central School. I am 14 years old, and I really like to ski with my friends. I like to do baking with my grandparents. But there are some concerns that I do have about the education in my area. And one of those concerns is the lack of coverage of catastrophic events such as World War II. My classmates have little to no knowledge about anything about the Holocaust. And something else is that adding on to that, there hasn't been a lot of coverage of LGBTQ+ issues or history being taught at my school. A lot of my classmates didn't know that queer people could even be legally married in the state of Vermont, which is very upsetting as a queer person in the state of Vermont. It is difficult being in a space where nobody knows about the history of your community. But I, something I'm very glad for is that I have a large circle of friends who have been really great supports to me, and we've just been trying to support each other since, you know, we don't have, there's not a lot of coverage about us in our curriculum. But lastly, something I did want to briefly cover is some of the flaws in our mental health resources for students. An example of this is that an anxiety coach came to our school to give counseling to students who were nominated by teachers and our guidance counselor, which I think is wonderful that we're able to do that. But something that is flawed with that is that they're making it so that the students have to take anxiety tests to their house, which could be potentially harmful to the students depending on what their home situation is. And we can almost never tell if they are struggling at their home, or if it is safe to bring these resources to their home.
All right. Lee, thank you very, very much for your thoughts, and I'm going to get back to you in a moment. Grady Hagenbo is an eighth grader at Crossbrook Middle School in Waterbury. Grady, thanks a lot for being with us tonight. What are your thoughts?
Thank you for having me, Senator. As you heard, my name's Grady, and I'm a student at Crossbrook. As we all know, COVID has done a lot to everybody, and good things and bad things. And some opportunities have come through, and some sad things have come through. Like, we all thought it was going to get better. Like, we all had vaccine, the vaccines were coming, people were wearing their masks, and it felt like pretty good. But then the Omicron variant hit, and it felt like, I know that we were still progressing forward, but it felt like it had gone back to the beginning again. And it scared me more than anything. I, and like, people made plans since it seemed like it was getting easier. I myself applied and got into being a legislative page at the Vermont State House. For people who don't know what that is, I'd get to go for about six weeks and run notes between legislators and help out around where I can. But when that program was supposed to be starting for me, it's the same time, or around the same time that Omicron hit. And the first two weeks were canceled, and then the next two weeks. I'm really happy that I ended up doing it, and I got a chance to be in there. But even being there, like, everybody was just coming back into session. There's still people remote. Everybody was nervous and were trying to adapt to this new way. The first house meeting that I saw, they spent an hour talking about how, like, they were going to be COVID safe, and how to, like, use the microphones correctly, and how, like, it was all going to run, just because half the people weren't there. I have been more stressed in these past few months than I have basically the entirety of COVID, just because we all let our guards down, myself included. Like I said earlier, there have also been some opportunities. My family runs a small farm, and we have seen a major increase in buyers for our products, because people would rather go a few houses down and buy their eggs and their maple syrup and their chicken than go to a busy store and have the potential of bringing home the sickness or getting sick themselves. That's pretty much all I have, but thank you for having me.
Well, Grady, thank you very much. Our next panelist is Jada Perry, who's a seventh grader from Proctor Junior Senior High School. Jada, thanks for being with us.
Thank you for having me here again. I'm Jada. I go to Proctor Senior High School. I enjoy, I play the alto saxophone. I'm in band. Music is one of my passions. I'm also in theater, which is very fun. And what I want to talk about is also sort of the thing with the virus and how it's been going around. It's so hard personally, because with the beginning of 2020, we had so much time taken away from us. And we were, I personally had a giant drain in my mental health, as well as my peers, with not getting that social interaction. I don't think many people realize how much of an impact it has, say, two years later. It's, it just took so much that we can't get back in everything. And we always feel like we're going somewhere, and we're getting better, and we've come so far, but then there's still so much more farther to go. We're constantly changing, and the rules keep changing, and this, and that. And also, my peers in class treated me terribly at times because I didn't get the vaccine shot, or I had my own opinions, which led to me losing a lot of friends through that, and also the school. There's a lot of regulations and things like that, and it was very hard to follow. But what people did is they put it on the kids, they put it on us, and it's something we can't control, because we can never predict anything. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. We, and it's not our fault for not getting the vaccine or getting the virus or something. And people put so much pressure on us, especially in the schools, like, keep your mask on, stay six feet away, or stay three feet away. It's, it's just so much at one time, and it just has a really, really big effect on, like I said, mental health and everything. And I don't think many people realize how serious things actually can be. And that's really all I have to say at the moment.
Thanks very much. Well, let me just ask you all a very brief question. You know, just pick up from where Jada left off, and that is the issue of mental health. Are you seeing more stress and anxiety among your friends and fellow students? Lee, why don't you say a few words on that? You saying that in Brownington?
There, like, I've definitely seen an increase with my peers. They just, it's been really hard, like, hanging out with them and realizing how stressed out they are because of all of this. And I've been getting stressed out, too. It's, it's just been...
How does that stress manifest itself? How do you, I mean, how are kids, what do you see in your friends or yourself that maybe was not the case a few years ago?
I'm seeing them being more cautious around each other. I'm seeing them, you know, just act differently. They, they don't act like they're as happy anymore, and it's just really sad.
Have your interaction with your friends changed? I would assume you spend less time with them in their homes or in school and stuff. Is that the case, or?
Yeah, it has been. And like, I've actually lost connection with some of my friends entirely because of this.
Okay. Lee, thanks a lot. Grady, what's, what are you seeing in Waterbury?
Well, from my peers, I've been noticing, like, everybody's stressed. Some people, it's more obvious. But I think a lot of people have been finding distractions from it, whether, and like, there's, like, I know some people who have done drugs to try to get distracted from it. I know some people, like, I have, I know somebody who cannot put their phone down just because they're either, because they, like, they need it now. It's like their only way to contact people. And, like, I see people, like, freaking out sometimes, like, like, leaving the classroom. I don't think there's a single kid in my grade who doesn't, like, fidget with something just to, like, just to calm down. It gets kind of scary sometimes that none of us can, like, stay calm.
Grady, thanks very much. Jada, what are you seeing in Proctor?
What, sir?
You raised the issue a moment ago about mental health. And my question is, what are you seeing in Proctor in terms of stress and anxiety among your friends?
A lot of different treatment, and people acting like really, really different, and it's weird. And it's not only the kids, it's the adults as well. Like, I went up to the office one day to get a cup of water, and the nurse handed it to me, but kind of kept their distance and acted like, like, so over precautious, to the point when it felt like there was something wrong with me. And that kind of stuff truly takes a big toll. And people have just, it's just been really bad. It went haywire. And I personally, and I'm guilty doing this, I cannot get off my phone. I'm constantly contacting people because I need, personally, I need that social interaction, and many of my peers do as well. That, that social interaction just does so much. And we personally, especially at this age, we're trying to grow and learn and everything together. So, yeah.
All right. Well, let me say to Lee and Grady and Jada, hey, thanks so much for being with us. And, you know, I think your parents and everybody else in the world regrets so much what you guys are having to go through. You're going, your generation is going through something that has not been the case in this country for probably 100 years. But you guys are courageous, and I am confident that you're going to be resilient. And when this thing is over, and it will be over, hopefully sooner than later, we can get back to normal. So, thank you very much for sharing your views with us tonight. And now we're going to go on. Katie, why don't you tell us what's happening next?
Sure. We're going to start with some of our questions. Some of our registrants sent us questions in ahead of time. We're going to start with one of those, and then we're going to take some folks live. So after we take this first question that I'm going to read to Senator Sanders, Gabriella, we're going to call on you, so get ready. But Senator, our first question comes from Maisie, and Maisie says, "I would love to know how to further involve myself in government. I'm only in eighth grade, but I want to do my part."
Well, you can give our office a ring for a start, and I'm glad you're interested in government. You know, we live in a democratic society where the people are supposed to rule. I mean, it's terribly important that as many people as possible get involved in our democracy and get involved in our government. So our number is 1-800-339-9834. Give us a ring, and we can, I think, make some recommendations. One of the things that we have done recently, we've done for many, many years, in order to get a sense of where kids are coming from in the state of Vermont, we do State of the Union Essays Contest. And we asked young people, and I think this year, Katie, we have, what, over 400 people are participating around the state?
Yep, 409 Vermonters.
All right. We asked young people, "If you were President of the United States, and you had to give the State of the Union speech, what would you be saying?" And I would like all of the young people to be thinking about it. This country today faces a whole lot of problems. It's not just COVID, it's climate change, it's economic and social inequality, it's many things. And I hope you will be thinking about how is a state and a nation, oh, we can address those issues.
Okay. And with that, we're going to take our next question live. It's going to come to us from Gabriella Jordan from St. Albans School. Gabriella, Ryan is bringing you live right now. Let us know your question.
Yeah, I have a question. In schools right now, we do a lot of our learning online. Online programs have slowly started to replace traditional teaching. What are your thoughts on the curriculum requiring these programs as more than just the supplements they were originally designed to be?
Well, Gabrielle, I hope that as soon as possible, and I think that is the case in many school districts around the state, kids can return to their classrooms and have the normal, traditional interaction with their teachers. I think there may be some parents who are nervous about sending the kids back to school, and we appreciate that. And online learning will be with us for a while. But just, my hope is that we'll be able to get more kids back into the classrooms to do what we have always done.
All right. Thanks for that question, Gabriella. Our next question is going to come to us from Hudson, Hudson Rainey. We're going to bring you live right now. Hudson, join us when you're on.
There's, my question is related to the lack of support with students of mental health. As I believe Jada mentioned, we've got the lack of guidance counselors at school. Here in Windsor, we've only, we only have two guidance counselors, and teachers are dropping like flies. And how do we, as leaders, like, I consider myself as a student council rep, some quote unquote, like, just how do, what is the way that we try to fix this problem?
Well, that is a great question, and I wish I could give you a simple magical answer. I can't. What COVID has done for all ages, in all parts of the country, has brought about a whole lot of anxiety and stress and depression, and more drug addiction, alcoholism, even suicidal thoughts. And as a nation and as a state, we are not adequately prepared to deal with this very significant crisis. And my response is in two ways. Number one, and in a sense, what tonight is about, we've got to be there for each other. We have to do our best to reestablish a sense of community where people are not feeling alone and isolated, where they can share their problems with their friends, their joys. I mean, that's what community is about. We are human beings, and by definition, we are social animals. We want to be with each other. And when we share who we are as human beings, we feel better, and everybody else feels better. So number one, I think, is establishing as best we can. And I think as we come out of Omicron and return to a sense of normalcy, we've got to pay a whole lot of attention on community, bringing our people together. Second of all, you know, there are some people who have been really hard hit, and we're going to have to do even more. And that means we're going to have to have the psychiatrists, the psychologists, the mental health counselors that we need. And I can tell you that Congress has appropriated many, many billions of dollars to try to get mental health into our schools and into all aspects of our community. In Vermont, we have many, many community health centers. And one of the charges of the community health centers, what they are supposed to be doing is providing mental health counseling, and they do a very good job at that. So those are the things that I think we've got to do. We have to reestablish that sense of community, bring people together. And number two, for those people who are really hurting, we need to make sure they get the treatment and care that they need.
Great. And Senator, we have a number of questions about mental health here in the chat for you. And for folks who are on with, on us, on WebEx with us, just a reminder that you can put your question right in the Q and A feature. And if you're on the phone, you can press star three. Our next question is going to come from Eliza Dusset, and Eliza has a mental health question for you as well. Eliza, you're live with Senator Sanders. Eliza, can you hear us? Okay, Senator, I'm going to read you Eliza's question. She says, "Can you touch on mental health issues for people who already have mental illness?"
Well, as I've indicated, we need to do a lot more than we are currently doing. I think one of the students mentioned they only have a couple of guidance counselors in schools. I know guidance counselors are stretched very, very thin, because part of their job is to make sure the kids are prepared to go to college, et cetera. And now they often have to deal with kids who are having special needs within the school. So... So um, Eliza, we are going to do everything that we can to bring the resources that we can into the state. And hopefully the state government will get it out to the local committees, but at every level. Uh, I think we have got to uh, provide support uh, to people who are hurting.
Great. And uh, Senator, we have a registration question that came in from Grace and in Middlebury. And Grace wants to know, she's getting ready to think about her summer. Um, what are some summer options that she has available to her this year?
Uh, Grace, thank you for that question because this is an area that I've worked on very hard. The uh, the American Rescue Plan uh, was passed by Congress uh, last year. Uh, it was a $1.9 trillion bill, which I think went a long way in helping us economically, educationally, health-wise, et cetera. And one of the provisions I fought very hard to get into was with the understanding that so many of our kids were hurting. But I wanted to make sure that we had the resources to improve and expand our summer programs uh, as well as our after-school programs. We brought many, many, many millions of dollars into the state. I think we've tripled funding actually for those programs. So uh, I think if you check out what's available uh, around the state, you're going to find a lot of very strong summer programs uh, which will include the arts, uh, will include athletics, uh, outdoor life, uh, academics, et cetera. So the state is probably better positioned now for strong summer programs uh, than it has ever been.
Great. Thank you, Senator. Um, we also have um, a question about the mask mandate that's in school, that's uh, being talked about in schools right now. It sounds like we have a number of students who are concerned about how lifting the mask mandate might help, might affect people who have compromised immune systems.
Uh, well, in my view, I mean, state governments all over this country are walking a kind of a tightrope on this. It goes without saying uh, that we want to make sure uh, that the virus is not spread and wearing a good mask. By the way, let me just say this about masks, because we've worked on this a little bit. A mask is not a mask, guys. There are masks that are much more effective than other masks. And we have gotten the Biden administration to send out about 400 million N95 masks. Those are the best quality masks. Uh, all over the country and a lot of them are coming into the state of Vermont. So if you're going to wear a mask, wear an N95 mask. Um, you know, the issue that we have to deal with is uh, there are some people who, for a variety of reasons, do not want to wear a mask anymore. They think the climate is safer than I think. So I think these are decisions you're going to see being made uh, at the local level. Uh, I believe now the state of Vermont, like other states, has moved away from mandates. Uh, and I think we're moving away from recommendations right now. So those will be your decisions being made uh, by school districts and by uh, individuals themselves.
Okay. And Senator, I think we have time for one more question from our middle schoolers before we move on to our high school panel.
Okay.
Um, our next and last question is going to come to us from Frankie. Frankie also has a question about masks, but in terms of bullying. Frankie, you're now live with Senator Sanders.
Um, thank you. So I had a question about if the Vermont government is thinking about um, how if they take um, because my teacher was talking about how they might take the mask mandate away from schools. And I was wondering if when some kids would want to keep their masks on, would people, like, are they thinking about like how other like students might be rude to them or harass them about?
That's a very good question. And this is what I think. I wear a mask a whole lot. And I got to tell you that in the Senate, about half of the senators do not. Uh, and I will make a judgment for myself about masks. And I don't really care what other people think. If I'm the only guy who wears a mask and I think it's appropriate, I will. When the day comes when I don't want to, I won't. And I hope you feel the same way. Some of you are saying, you know, I'm young, I'm not going to get sick. Uh, I've been vaccinated. I'm not worried about it. Fine. That's your business. And that's right. Some of you may feel differently. These are very personal decisions. But I would hope that nobody, you know, makes fun of somebody else because they're doing something different than you are doing. And if there's one kid in the class who wants to wear a mask, that's his or her business. And that kid should not be harassed, uh, et cetera. So uh, we're at a moment where people are going to make their own choices. And bullying and picking on people and making fun of people because they might do something differently than you are is really not good behavior and is not acceptable. Okay, Katie, I think it might be a good idea to get to the uh, uh, our high school panel right now. So uh, uh, junior high school folks, eighth graders, seventh graders, thank you very much for participating. And for those who ask questions, uh, thank you very much as well. Uh, we are now going to go to our high school panel. And as I understand it, we have about 10 uh, young people from throughout the state of Vermont. Uh, and um, we have folks from Burlington and Bellas Falls and North Country and Bennington and Rutland and Fairfax, Manouski, uh, Lake Region, uh, Morrison, uh, and Mushfield. So we've got folks from all over the state and I want to welcome all of you. Um, and I think we're going to start off with Ella Ambrosio, who was a 12th grader in Burlington, which is where I live. Uh, Ella, thank you very much for joining us. Uh, and look forward to hearing your perspective on what's going on.
Hi. Um, well, yeah, as you said, I'm Ella Ambrosio. I am a senior at Burlington High School and a second year at the Burlington Technical Center for, on my classes, Design and Illustration. Um, when trying to decide on an issue to discuss today, a few things came to mind, but the most prevalent for me was the changing of our school space. Um, if you had told me as a freshman that I would only spend a year and a half in our building and never spend any of my time in their facilities, I would have been confused and maybe have rethought some aspects of my life for the next four years. Um, but when the 2020 school year started and we found out that we would be completely remote, not because of COVID, but because of the PCBs, I think that everyone was a little confused and frustrated. And I just wish that the transition into Macy's had gone a bit more smoothly. Um, I feel like there could have been better communication between the high school and its students during that process. And I understand that there's a lot of uncertainty on the school's part, which makes it hard to make it clear to its students what's going to be happening. But I remember sometimes the school would only email the parents with important updates, which made me feel as though students were just another technical aspect to figure out and not kind of the whole point of the school, if that makes sense.
It makes sense.
Okay. But so I guess for that part, I just like, in the future with, I'm graduating, but the high school is still going to be changing a lot and trying to find a more permanent space. And I think just communication with the students is key so that no one is uncertain of their future, their education. And then moving on from that aspect to the current situation of like the Burlington Technical Center as well. Um, I'm enrolled in Design and Illustration, which is located on Cherry Street under the CVS in their more central area. Um, and I'm very grateful that we've been able to move into this space. It's my understanding that it's a three-year lease. And they're working with architects to try and create a place to accommodate all of BTC. And I would just like to stress the importance of providing a localized center for the Burlington Technical Center. Um, because last year when we were at the North Ave location, I saw our director, Jason Gingold, on a very rare occasion because he had a lot of ground to cover. And now that we're in the same offices as him and the other leaders of the Technical Center, I see them every day when I enter and every day when I leave. And I feel like it's definitely helped me form a deeper connection with the school and been able to use everything that it provides for me.
Okay, Ella, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Go for it.
Right, because I want to hear from you. Uh, but just in case people didn't know what Ella was talking about, uh, as a Burlingtonian, I do know. Uh, above and beyond COVID and all the other problems everybody has to deal with, in Burlington, the high school was shut down because of concerns about contamination. And uh, the kids moved to what used to be the Macy's in downtown, which was a heck of a transition. So on top of everything else, uh, that is what the young people in Burlington have to deal with. Uh, okay. Our next panelist is Joey Jakes, who's the 11th grade at Bellas Falls Union High School. Uh, Joey, thanks a lot for being with us.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sanders or Senator Sanders. I, I, as a high schooler during COVID, I, I became a freshman at the beginning of COVID and this was a big struggle because I have not had one full year of normal high school at all. And a mixture of this and also knowing that uh, my mental health and my friend's mental health has been at risk a lot. And I know this personally, because I know my grades slipped all the way down because of that. So did my friends and it led to a lot of teachers not understanding uh, the students' problems because they were just thinking, why aren't the students doing the work? And the students were thinking, why are the teachers expecting me to do work when I'm so sad? What the heck? So with the contradiction of both of these groups, it caused a lot of problems, at the very least, in uh, my area. Um, also, uh, throughout COVID, the entire time, one of the most important things for me has been keeping in contact with friends and people who I care about deeply, which is why uh, local groups around Bellas Falls for me have been really helpful. There is a local group I'm a part of, Friends for Change. They are amazing. And I have gone to them after school most weeks. Every week, they've been fighting to have a Bellas Falls Community Center for years. And they've been really trying really hard for this. And I, I think if we were to actually have that be a thing, it would help out a lot. As I know a lot of students, uh, still, even though people are getting more used to COVID, uh, it's still a problem for a lot of kids and their mental health.
Um, how is that swimming pool down there in your rec set? Is that still working pretty well?
Swimming pool is pretty enjoyable.
Good, good. I think we got some money two years ago for that. Um, our next panelist is Sam Blackman, who is at uh, Mount Anthony Union High School.
Uh, yep. Hi, I'm Sam Blackman. I'm a senior currently at Mount Anthony High School. Uh, I'm a wrestler. Uh, I love mountain biking, video games, all that kind of stuff. And um, the thing that I wanted to touch on more is a little more uh, broad scale, I guess, than what a lot of you guys have been talking about. But I feel like kind of as a generation, we're being thrown into the teeth of like multiple different crises. Like for me right now, like I'm about to go to college next year. You know, I got all this stuff going on. And it's like, we got COVID, we got the economic, you know, turmoil and all that. We've got, I mean, our government system seems like it's even becoming more unstable by the minute. And uh, there's just a lot of instability that this generation's kind of coming of age in right now. And I mean, my question is, what do you think that, you know, we can do ourselves? Uh, and what do you think that people in government can do to try to set us up the best to be able to deal with the, you know, current, you know, the coming crises too? Because I mean, this isn't going to stop. We got the all sorts of stuff that we're going to have to deal with. And uh, it's just, it's a lot that comes down on our generation right now. And um,
Let me just say, Sam, the first point is, you're absolutely right. I mean, I wish I could tell you something else. A lot, a lot is coming down on your shoulders. You know, everything being equal, unless we turn things around, your generation may make less money than your parents make. Uh, you got to deal with climate. You're going to have to deal with the instability in government. You're right. You're seeing a huge division in this country. I didn't want to get into it tonight, but the, the, very divisive. Um, and and what I would say is, um, try as hard as all of this stuff is, and it is, it's one crisis at, I just spent a half hour talking to somebody today about the possible war in the Ukraine, which will be a disaster, not of everything else. Last thing in the world we need is, is that we're worried about future pandemics. Um, so you got to understand the reality and then we're going to have to be as strong and as tough as we can be. And one of the things we don't do in the midst of this is start blaming everybody else. Yeah, and there's some people say, you know, it's the Chinese, it's immigrants, it's people of color, you know, and that's what we don't do. This is hard. We have given your generation just an enormous number of crises to deal with. And we're going to have to figure out our way through them. All I can say is that here in the Congress, uh, some of us have worked very, very hard trying to figure out, how do we make it easier for you to go to college? And not leave school deeply in debt? How do we make sure that your family has good quality health, can't afford the prescription drugs they need? How do we make sure that moms who get birth can have access to the good quality childcare uh, for their kids? How do we make sure that the planet we're leaving you is a habitable and healthy planet? We're working on these issues. And we need you to be involved, your generation to be involved in helping us to address it, to understand why things are the way they are and how we can improve it. I wish I could give you an easy answer. I can't. It's tough stuff. But you're going to have to roll up your sleeves, get as smart as you can, read as much as you can, learn as much as you can, get involved with other people as much as you can. Okay? That's the short answer.
Yeah.
Um,
Thanks, Senator.
Very much. Uh, our next panelist is
Thank you.
Thank you. It's from Rutland High School, Gabriella Olson. Gabriella, thanks a lot.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I'm Gabriella and I'm from Rutland High School, currently a junior.
Gabriella, if you could move a little bit closer to the microphone, look, come a little bit closer to the microphone.
Okay. So I am currently playing basketball and I'm in band. So it's been a lot to try and handle, uh, as there's been so many changes basketball-wise. Has been a lot of changes. We've had to wear masks everywhere we go. We have to answer questions. And it's hard to run around with masks on and then catch your breath, even though we're constantly saying, keep your masks up. Um, so in the past two and a half years, I have encountered a very dark place. And I'm still trying to get out of that dark place. I felt alone and currently like, who's there to help me? I have nowhere to go or anything to do. And not reason that I had my entire family, whether they were in New Jersey or in my home. Um, school programs have also changed back 2020. I was selected to go to Japan as a participant in a student exchange program and it has been put on over two years. Um, what kind of experiences am I going to and understanding other cultures? Education occurs outside of just the classroom walls. And I'm afraid that I'm going out on this once in a lifetime opportunity as I have one year left. So as I mentioned, I had and currently still have anxiety and depression. Um, COVID-19 hit everybody very hard and some harder than others. Uh, I feel that my family is definitely one that was hit harder because we're far from our other family members in New Jersey where we can't go and see them because many are at high risk. And we all kind of started butting heads and now thankfully we're back to where we're. My brothers and I also got COVID in January. And we are all still currently trying to catch up on schoolwork as some of my classes work isn't being posted on like Google Classroom or anything. Um, whereas some of theirs are. I'm still trying to catch up on a few of my missing assignments in chemistry. COVID has impacted every part of my life. It's impacted my health, my education, my social life and my ability to go on once in a lifetime opportunity. Um, I've noticed a lot of my peers have gotten more anxious and have also fallen to deeper holes because we don't know how to socialize anymore. Everything's screen and our, our phones are attached to ours 24/7. So it's hard to communicate with everybody. And I'd just like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to my story.
Gabriella, thank you very much for your honesty and um, all that I can say is that what you are describing, don't think for a second that you're alone. I would probably think that there are millions of young people who are going through exactly the disappointments, the anxiety uh that you're going through right now. It is what it is and you're experiencing it. So it's not in your head. It's not, oh my God, what am I doing wrong? It's not. It is a terrible reality and we're dealing with it. And uh I think let's hope, knocking on wood here, uh that this, we're seeing the rates go down very significantly. And hopefully, uh, you know, we will return to normal. And you will have the opportunity to make up some of what you lost. But, you know, that you're hurting is a honest and real response to the circumstance that you're in. So. Um, our, our next panelist is uh from uh DFA and Fairfax. And that's Hunter Cargill. Hunter, thanks a lot for being with us.
Uh, thank you so much. I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is truly an honor and a privilege. Um, as Senator Sanders stated previously, I'm a senior. And like many of my peers, fellow panelists and high school students all across the country, I plan on attending college next year. College is a huge step for anyone. It's mentally challenging, physically draining, and an extreme financial commitment. Some students I know from the beginning of high school went to college and ended up leaving because the pandemic made it too difficult to learn. Everything was the same as it was when they graduated high school. The only difference is they had loads of debt and nothing to show for it. According to the National Education Association, Americans owe a collective $1.6 trillion in student debt. And it takes the average person 20 years to repay that debt. So hypothetically, if I were to get my bachelor's degree, I wouldn't be student debt free until I was 42. I think I speak for everyone when saying that no one wants debt until their early to mid 40s. They should be worried about other things like building a family, buying a house, and focusing on their career. Personally, my dream is to become a pediatrician. If I had all the money in the world, I would go straight through college, medical school, and into a residency. However, I certainly do not have all the money in the world. Thus, going to college for eight years scares me quite a bit. Myself and my peers have talked about how we plan on paying for college. Some kids have the ability to get through college with little to no debt. Others, myself included, are not in a position to donate tens of thousands of dollars to a college fund. With the current prices of college tuition, I'm not sure I will be able to reach my goal of becoming a doctor. In the coming years, I really hope that there are some major changes to the financial system for college students. So students can accomplish their goals and complete their childhood dreams without the hassle of debt crawling up the back of their necks. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Hunter. Let me just say a word on that, because this is an issue I've been working on. Um, what I hope very much is that all of you will study hard and try to know the strengths and weaknesses of the United States. Also understand what goes on around many other countries around the world. Uh, and learn how we are in many ways behind other countries. So Hunter, if I were to ask you if we were in Germany right now, do you think a German student would be saying, I'm worried about the cost of going to college?
Absolutely not. I don't think so.
And that's true in, in other countries as well. You talk about your desire to become a doctor. God knows, we have a major doctor shortage in America. We have a nursing shortage in America. We have a dentist shortage in America. So we need far more healthcare professionals. But I have talked to doctors and nurses and dentists who have gone to graduate school and they have left school hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. Talked to a dentist, left school $400,000 in debt. Alright? So I want you all to be thinking about, what does that mean? What should we do as a nation? Now, my views are different than many of the other members of the Senate. So I want all of you and every other young person in America who has the desire and the ability to be able to get the best education you can, and as Hunter said, not to worry about money, worry about your studies. And if you wanna go to medical school, we need doctors. I don't want you leaving medical school free $400,000 in debt. So like other issues that have been raised, we are working on it. We have tripled funding for a program called the National Health Service Corps. And what that means, Hunter, if you were prepared to practice medicine in an underserved area, a lower income area, the government would forgive all of your debt. Alright? And we're trying to expand that for nurses as well. We want nurses and doctors. And we don't want to leave school deeply in debt. But all of these issues that Hunter has raised and that others have raised, these are the kinds of policy issues I deal with every single day, every other senator does as well. You have to formulate your own views. What makes sense? Terms of student debt, you're absolutely right. There are 45 million Americans today who are paying off student debt. People can't get married. People can't buy a home. They can't have kids. Does that make a lot of sense? I don't think so. Meanwhile, we give tax breaks to billionaires. So I think we gotta think about that and try to develop policies in this country which work for ordinary people, middle class, working class people, not just the very wealthy. Alright, that's the end of my speech. I went on too long. Alright, our next panelist is from Winuski. And it's Kelmar OJ Daring. Uh, Kelmar, thanks a lot for being with us.
Uh, thank you for introducing me. Uh, my name is Kelmar Daring. I'm a 12th grader at Winuski High School. And so I think I speak for a lot of people when I say that the past year, past two years has been very difficult for students, um specifically, um specifically with the dynamic between remote learning and the more social in-person learning. And so, you know, at the beginning of school, started with this remote learning as an alternative to not being um able to learn because, you know, we were out of schools because of the pandemic, so we couldn't really do much of learning. Um, and so it was a good alternative at first, you know, you could actually do um work at home, or whichever way students looked at that, maybe they didn't wanna do schoolwork, maybe they did. Um, but it did, it came with like a lot of, it came with like a lot of problems. There was technical issues with what, what they had available to them at home. There were issues with wifi. Maybe if they're in a more Zoom format like this one, they weren't able to like properly connect. And there, there was an obvious issue of not being able to like socially interact with other people, which can be um daunting for others more than some. Um, but you know, over the past year, we've kind of gone, or at least um for certain settings that I've been at, we've gone to back a more in-person type of learning. Um, where we're, you know, being social with a few like regulations and uh recommendations for like wearing masks put in. Um, but even so, like one of the biggest things, because I attend the Burlington Technical Center, is um, well, are we gonna have to go back to remote learning? Um, cuz since I go to the Burlington Technical Center where I study film, it, it's a very collaborative uh and creative process that we have where we work with other people, we talk with them, we get ideas. It's a very creative and fun process. Um, and that's because we're in a space where we can like talk to people who are like us. And then um, to think about like having to go back to remote learning, many of us, um, I, obviously I can't speak for everybody, but I think a lot of people are worrying, well, is this gonna be as um successful if we're behind screens again? Um, and you know, it doesn't just stop there because, you know, I'm planning on going to college next year and right here in Winus- or right here in Burlington uh at Champlain College. But it's the same thing with me where I'm like, okay, I wanna go to college there, but am I gonna be doing learning in the classroom or am I gonna be doing from my own room? Because that could very greatly impact my college experience. So it's just something that I think is on a lot of people's minds.
Alright, Kelmar, thanks very much um for your remarks. Uh, and you're right on. I mean, um, the answer is, I mean, and this is just the simple truth, nobody knows. I mean, what we had hoped uh is after the first pandemic, after the first virus, the Delta virus, we had hoped, thank God, that was over. Vermont did a really good job in keeping the numbers pretty low. Uh, and then you got hit with Omicron. Uh, and as all of you know, you know, the numbers went up very quickly. Omicron is very, very contagious. Uh, and now the numbers are beginning to go down very, very significantly. The truth is, nobody knows what's gonna happen tomorrow. I mean, our prayer is that, you know, we will be, you know, this thing will be behind us. And you're not gonna have to worry about remote learning, that you can be back in classroom, people can be back and work uh and not worry about getting sick. Uh, and you know, what we are doing, what government is trying to do as best it can is to protect people and it's very difficult. And you put yourself in the hands of the governor or anybody else. People say, I wanna get back to work. Yeah, that's fine. But do you really have the right to spread the virus and make other people sick and maybe kill them? No, you don't. What's the, what's the, the correct process? How far do you go one way? How far do you go the other way? It ain't easy. It really is not. Not for the governor, not for the Congress, not for anybody else. So our goal is, you know, through uh masks, through vaccines, through the development of treatments that are coming more and more available, so that when people do get sick, we can treat them early on and they don't end up in the hospital, they don't die, putting a lot of money into all of that stuff. Uh, so, and we're also planning for the future. We're gonna be spending billions and billions of dollars to make sure we're better prepared for something, God forbid, that might happen in the future. Uh, so all that I could say, uh Kelmar, is you're right. These are uncertain times. That uncertainty impacts everybody. You're running back in your class, you're worried about the quality education you get, you wanna be in a classroom at Champlain, uh absolutely understandable. Uh, well, just all of us gonna have to work as hard as we can, work together to come up with the best solutions that we can. And hopefully, hopefully, uh we will see better days in the near future. Uh, Kelmar, thanks a lot for your comments. Uh, our next um panelist is Grace Wilson, who's in the 10th grade at Lake Region High School in Barton. Grace, thanks.
Hello. Um, thank you for having me. My name is Grace Wilson. I'm a sophomore at Lake Region and I'm 15. Something that I wanted to bring up is something that I have been working with and trying to work through since September. Um, uh, I work at Outright Vermont and my boss recommended me to um talk to my school about equity policies and how um schools in Vermont need to put equity policies in. Because as I've seen at my elementary school and middle school and my high school now, that students aren't treated equal. Not necessarily by staff, but I've seen staff members treat students differently by like their identity and race and stuff like that. But at my high school, it's extremely bad with um how differently students are treated by other students. Um, as I know, as a queer person in Vermont, that um I have not faced a lot of homophobia, thankfully. Um, but I, some of my friends have and my, some of my friends who are people of color at Lake Region, um, since there's very few, um, they face a lot of racism. They're like called slurs throughout the halls. They try to, um, people try to fight them and stuff like that. And I just don't think that learning in an environment like this is right and that we need to put equity policies in so that we don't have to learn in an environment like this. People don't have to fear how they're gonna be treated when they walk out into the halls. Um, they don't need to fear how they're gonna be treated at lunch. They just need to learn in an environment that's not gonna harm them and it's not gonna cause them mental and possibly physical pain. And um, that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Grace. And, you know, I would hope that we all agree with what Grace is saying. That is, you know, through the struggles of many great people over the years, uh and they have been difficult, difficult struggles in fighting against racism, sexism, and homophobia. Uh, in many respects, we are making progress, but in some respects, we're not. Uh, and we still have a lot more work to do. Uh, but I hope, you know, historically Vermont has been one of the leaders uh in the country in fights against all kinds of bigotry. Uh, and we must continue to do that and understand that all people are human beings. Uh, let's treat all people equally. So Grace, thank you very much uh for your thoughts. Uh, our next panelist is uh Max King. Uh, Max is in the 12th grade at Peoples Academy in Morristown. Max?
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, I'm 17 and I could have talked about a million different things today, but I zeroed in on what I felt were most relevant. Uh, the first of which has been a common theme tonight, and that is the lack of mental health and addiction supports for young people in Vermont. Um, because it's been talked about so much, what I really want to say is that we need the adults in schools to support us. As a mentally ill teenager, um, I have been fighting adults my entire life to believe me when I say I am in pain. This is not an excuse. This is not made up. That needs to change and we need education for the adults in the building. Um, so that moves me to my next issue. As I move into adult wi- uh adulthood along with my friends, we've been faced with the cost of living in Vermont. Uh, it has skyrocketed since I was a kid and I have friends who can no longer afford to live here and afford education at the same time. So they've been forced to leave. Uh, my mother has a very decent paying job and we have a two-bedroom apartment that sometimes we still have to scrape by to afford. When I was a child, she worked five jobs and we could still barely afford the basics. I know the issue of housing has been talked about many times in the past couple of years. But it seems like the solution that has been, come up with is to make more apartment buildings. The issue is not a lack of apartments. The issue is the cost of those buildings. Uh, people who do not qualify for low-income housing are still struggling to afford the basics. And I know that there's a system in, in place to say that you should be able to, but the reality is, we can't. And I'm not sure what to do about that, but I, I just hope something can change for the next generation to come. Um, the next topic is the lack of culture in Vermont. Uh, that was really the deciding factor on what made me want to move out of Vermont. Um, we are one of the whitest states in America. In addition to the lack of cul- culture, I'd also like to bring attention to the lack of BIPOC history being taught in schools and LGBT history being taught in schools. Indigenous people are being taught that their people are extinct. And they deserve to know what happened to their ancestors and how they contributed and continue to contribute to our society today. This brings me to a national issue I would like to bring awareness to. As I plan on moving across, um, as I plan on moving, I have come across the issue of bodily autonomy rights in our country. Uh, these rights change based on what state you're living in, uh, based on what state you're living in. Meaning I cannot medically transition as a transgender man in some states in the US. And there are women who cannot control their own body in many states in many different ways. It should be a federal law in the United States that you have bodily autonomy. Every US citizen, no, excuse me, every person should have the right to control what happens to them and their body. And I hope you'll take this under consideration and thank you for your time. Please fight for the queer people in our country. We need it.
Um, Max, thank you very much. Just picking up on one of the many issues that you raised. You raised a lot. And I'm glad you raised the housing issue, but it is, it's not just the very high cost of housing, which is the case in many parts of the state. It is also the lack of housing that people need. We don't have enough housing. So we need to build a lot more affordable housing and we need to make sure that rents do not continue to go up to the degree that they are. Uh, in terms of one of the issues that you raised, as a matter of fact, uh in Vermont, I know and in here in the Senate, uh we will be voting on, I believe, quite uh soon uh on legislation which would codify, put into law Roe v Wade, which would protect a woman's right to choose uh in every state of the country. Uh, uh, Max, thank you very much. Our next uh panelist is Anna Lyndon Boyes uh from Twinfield Union uh High School. Anna, thanks a lot for being with us.
Thank you, Senator Sanders, um for this opportunity. It's an honor to be here um and to be able to share my story with you. Um, so my name is Anna Lyndert Boyes. I use she/her pronouns. I'm currently a senior at Twinfield Union School, um, and I'm an early college student at Goddard in Plainfield. Um, it's clear that in the past couple of years, in this pandemic, people have suffered. There have been struggles with mental health, engagement, isolation, uh how to effectively teach and learn over a screen or with more than half of your class absent due to COVID. Um, all of these struggles are real and continue to affect both youth and adults in education today. Tonight, though, I'd love to share with you another angle of how the pandemic has and will continue to affect education in the future. COVID has dressed the spotlight on so many issues and disparities within our current systems of education. These issues didn't appear overnight, but rather were amplified and made clear for all to see by the context of COVID-19 today. In many ways, this pandemic is sparking necessary conversations and providing us with a clear direction towards a more sustainable, personalized, equitable and relationship-centered future for education. Um, communities are the experts. Rather than an expectation of compliance and memorization of information that you use only once on a test, we need to be creating space in schools for exploration and personalization. This year, I've had a personalized and very engaging learning experience. Through Goddard College, I've designed my own areas of studies, um, centered around my interests and passions such as restorative practices, um, facilitation and transformative education. Um, I weave this experience together with my position at the nonprofit Call Up For Learning as a youth program specialist. Um, through this, I've gotten the opportunity to travel to elementary, middle and high schools to have conversations and facilitate dialogue with students, teachers, uh, superintendents, community members and a variety of other stakeholders. In addition to this, I've watched documentaries, read articles and books and wrote reflections and essays. All of this, um, combined was my education. So the resources and research that I've used and did influenced my facilitation and work in schools and vice versa. Um, through this experience, I've discovered what really works for me and I've also discovered what doesn't. Um, all of this despite the current context of COVID. So this specific example is not the past for everyone. This is just one example of the potential of education. Um, I truly believe that we need to move towards a pedagogy that can adapt to students' needs um, and acknowledge that we all enter spaces with different life experi- uh, with different life experiences, passions, interests and ways of learning and taking in information. Um, school should look different for each student, but implementing project-based learning, um, things like place-based learning and having an emphasis on youth and adult partnerships are just a few places that I see um, as starting points. So emphasizing critical thinking, communication, collaboration and personalization. Um, these are all essential and will lead to a more sustainable, powerful and learner-centered future of education that really benefits all of its stakeholders. Thank you for your time.
Anna, thank you very, very much. Uh, let me change the schedule around a little bit now. Um, uh, this, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask, um, some of the panelists. And maybe pick up on a point that Anna made in terms of quality of education. What I'd like to ask all of you guys or whoever wants to respond. Tell us what, and I understand that COVID has disrupted everything, that the last two years have been different than it otherwise would have been all your first year, your first two years. Tell us what is working well in your school. Tell us what is not working well in your school. And like Anna, give us some ideas about how you think we can improve education uh, in the state of Vermont. Who wants to jump in on that? What works well, what's not working well? How do we improve education in Vermont? Who wants to take a shot at that one? Okay, uh, Sam, why don't you jump in?
Uh, thanks, Senator. Um, one of the things that I think my school has done well is, um, right now we're back pretty much fully to, uh, uh, in-person learning. That's been true for a while now. Uh, the end of my junior year, which was last year, we were kind of like half and half and that wasn't. I mean, it was good that you were able to be in school a little bit, but it wasn't a great system, obviously, because we'd go in Monday and Tuesday and then they'd be like, alright, it's all remote. And we'd have like Wednesday off. It was just super confusing. But, uh, one of the things that I think really hasn't worked well, honestly, for a while isn't, is just like the lack of consistency and like any sort of like real general good message coming from the administration. It's kind of just like changing all the time and it's, it's just like, it's a little hard to describe, but we really do not have a consistent base of what we're doing um, as a school. Things like, we changed our attendance policy completely um, this semester. Last semester, we had a, a entirely different attendance policy than we did this semester. And it, it's just like trying to figure out how that happens. I mean, we like, we had a full schedule change this semester. We eliminated, um, our SOS, which is our advisory. I think some schools probably call it. It's just basically like 15 minutes where you, you take kind of in the middle of the day um, before or after lunch. I mean, it's just like, it's really hard to actually like square that because things are just changing so rapidly.
Sam, are students, have students been involved in those changes?
No. Not at all. Uh, I think a lot of people, for a while, I used to do it, especially as a freshman, complained about how SOS was done, but a lot of people, no one wanted it gone. But they were just like, alright, yeah, people are complaining about the way we're doing it. Let's just get rid of it. And like, let's add five more minutes on to every class. And then they also messed up the bells somehow, so we have no idea what we're doing.
Alright, let me, uh,
Thanks.
Let me, thank you, Sam. Um, I want to continue that question. What works well, what doesn't work well? How can we improve education? And one of the points that I think Sam raised, are, are students themselves involved, uh, in any significant way in the decision-making, uh, in high schools and should they be? Thoughts? Who wants to jump in? Gabriella, do I see you moving around?
I was just moving. I was shifting.
There's a mistake to move because now I'm calling on you.
What was the question again?
Uh, the question is what works well, what's not working well? Where do we have to go in the future to improve education? And are, are students involved in decision-making, uh, in schools enough?
Yeah, so at Rutland, I definitely feel that we are doing a very good job at keeping us in school every day and keeping us on task in what we need to do, just like a normal school year would be. But something like, something that we definitely work on is what I mentioned earlier is posting assignments on like Google Classroom or just emailing them to students who are home with COVID or for other issues. Um, that's definitely something that feel we could do to help students stay caught up and not end up getting left behind in a way.
Good. Other comments? What's going well in school? What's not going well? And if you could imagine your own school, what would be your perfect school? Kellmar, what do you think?
Um, I may be a bit bi- Um, I may be a bit biased because I personally have had like a lot of input in terms of student voice in my school. But I do genuinely believe that Wynieski has done, uh, really good things when it comes to, uh, having student voice and not just leaving their students out of the loop. Because we're a bit of a smaller school, it's a, it's a bit more of like a tightly knit and compact community where like everyone knows each other and like the problems that students are getting. Um, did, do we get across to the teachers? Um, yeah, so that's something I think Wynieski has done really well. I know that when there are a lot more social justice issues happening, they also, there was also like an influx in, um, or an increase rather, in like, uh, specific programs being created after school. Like I know we had the, uh, uh, I forgot what it's called. I think it was the Wynieski Students for Anti-Racism. That was a new group that started and they had like a list of demands that they created for schools and their school listened. And there's a few of those demands that are going under, are being implemented right now. So that's one thing I think that's gone well.
Okay. Kellmar, thanks. Uh, Max, did you want to jump into this?
Yeah, earlier you asked if, uh, students are involved at all in making decisions. Um, and I am on the leadership team at my school, which is me and, um, a few other students and a ton of teachers. And it's all about making decisions that are important to our school. And although I think it's great that my school has been advocating for student voice, um, as somebody who has continuously advocated for students and, uh, spoke out against injustices that I saw. Uh, as a student, when I say something that a teacher or many teachers do not agree with, it's not taken seriously. They don't want to hear it. They're no longer interested in what I have to say. Um, and I don't think that a lot of teachers want student voice. I think that they want us to say what they're already thinking or what they want to hear. Um, and I think that that's a big problem. So yes, student voice is important. It's working well. But the issue is that adults need to actually listen to us.
Very good point. Okay, Hunter, did you want to jump in?
Uh, yeah, so I know one of the things that, uh, is working well at my school is there are a few teachers that realize that students have lives outside of school. Uh, their lives after school, they don't just go home and do homework like robots, eat dinner and go to bed. We have jobs, we have friends, we have family, we have other obligations that we need to tend to, and it's not just homework and not schoolwork. And I know there's some teachers in my school, like the old school teachers, who assign us two, three hours of homework each night and we're expected to bring it in the next day like we have no, no other lives outside of school. And I think that's a real issue.
You know, Hunter, you raised an issue. I was in a high school some years ago and I can't remember. It was, uh, Lemoyle County, I think. And I just been asking, I asked the kids that, how many of them work after school? And I was stunned. Like 80% of the kids raised their hands. They work McDonald's or wherever they work. Uh, is Hunter, your experience that your friends of, you know, people in the school are normally working after school to help out with the family funds?
Uh, yeah, I know, um, I personally don't work after school, but I do have a job that I work both days on the weekends. And that takes up most of my time on the weekends, so I don't have time to do homework on the weekends. But a lot of my other friends have shifts that they pick up after school that start, school ends at 2:50 and they pick up shifts at three that go until nine.
Wow, is that right? You know, you have to work until nine?
Yeah, and then they go home and then they have X amount of homework that they need to do before going to bed. And then by that time, it's 1, 2 AM. And then they have to wake up at 6 AM and do it all again.
Alright, let me ask others. Is what Hunter is saying unusual or are you seeing that around the state? Who wants to comment on that? Um, Sam, did you want to comment on that briefly?
Um, yeah, honestly, I think that's something that I've seen a lot lately, that type of stuff. And not just with jobs, with sports, like there's a lot of teachers who, um, are just completely inconsiderate, honestly, of kids' time. Like I, I've had some pretty much horror stories. Like I remember, uh, sitting up in the bleachers of my, uh, New England championships because I couldn't get an extension on my math project because I was going to be in Boston for the whole weekend, uh, my sophomore year, right before COVID, trying to bang out these flashcards and stuff. I remember kids who got assigned, uh, like in a, like a big paper, um, with one night's notice in my AP English class this year, who are like, you know, I got a game up in Colchester. It's like a three-hour drive for us. Like, how am I supposed to do this thing online? You know, and like, it's not a knock on the teachers, it's just a knock on the system, I think.
Or anybody else want to comment on that? All the other stuff the kids deal with other than, above and beyond schoolwork? Any other thoughts on that? Okay. Um, alright, Katie, let me give it back to you. What do you got?
Great, thanks, Senator. Um, we're going to take some questions now from our audience. As a reminder to folks, if you do have a question for Senator Sanders, uh, you can write it in the Q and A chat box on WebEx or you, if you are on the phone with us, you can press star three.
Katie, I would rather hear from, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'd rather hear the, you know, if, if these questions can come back to our panelists, that would be great.
Great, excellent. Yeah, we will do that. So you heard the Senator, folks. Uh, if you've got questions for the panelists, please, um, ask them and if you want to put in the chat box who your question is for. Um, we can do that. Um, Senator, we do have a question that we're going to take live from Elijah. Um, Elijah, you're on with our group here.
Tonight, um, my name's Elijah. I'm 16 and I go to Berberton Academy in Manchester, Vermont. Um, I'm very thankful you are happy to hear what young Americans have to say. As someone who is 95% of har- heart of hearing in their right ear and has severe test anxiety, standardized testing is not something I'm very good at. For me, I believe that te- uh, standardized testing is not a very good way to determine how good a student is. As I made high honor roll last year, even with, um, these faults. My question to you is, what do you believe is the best way to evaluate student performance?
Well, Elijah, thank you for the question. Uh, I happen to agree with you. I am not a great fan of standardized testing as well. And I suspect uh, you may or may not know, the most teachers in the state of Vermont are not fans of standardized testing because what ends up happening is teachers are forced to spend all of their time uh, teaching students to take tests, which is not fair to the students or the teacher. Uh, I think, you know, Anna earlier on raised some interesting questions about her sense of what kind of education works well for her, and it certainly is not standardized testing. But, uh, Anna, if you want to jump in or anybody else wants to jump in on, you know, we want to make sure you guys are learning, that everybody learns in a different way. What's the best way? To motivate people to learn, to have a sense of how well people are doing and to learn about where their deficiencies are so that we can improve that. Anna, do you want to jump into that one?
Yeah, um, I will say that in my experience at Goddard, what we did was, um, narrative evaluations, which were really helpful to me. So I sent in my work. I wrote a cover letter, um, explaining what I did. And, and, and all my work for that, um, section. And my advisor, who I was matched with, um, responded back to me with like up to three pages of just responses to all of my work. I really like how you did this. Is there a way that you could go deeper with this? Um, here's like a potential resource that I think would further your learning even more. Um, and that's just been really helpful in terms of it's not just like a number, you know, that I have to interpret somehow by myself. Um, it's open communication and, you know, connections and relationships and you really get to know each other between like student and advisor. And you get to learn more about yourself and expand, um, resources and knowledge.
Okay, other thoughts on standardized testing? Anybody have any brilliant insights? Okay. Katie, you got another question?
Yes, absolutely. And Senator, I think this is something that all of our panelists can help speak to. Uh, we got a question from Evan, who goes to Woodstock Union, and Evan asks, "How can we as a generation demand actual change when it seems like the government doesn't care?"
Well, Evan, I can go on answering that one for a few hours, but I won't. It's not a question of quote unquote, the government not caring and hope, okay? I want you guys to be thinking about, who is the government? What does that mean, the government? Does nobody in government care? Do some people care more than others? What impact does money in politics have in terms of how government responds to the needs of people? So if I would say to you that tonight in America, 600,000 people are homeless, they either sleep out on the streets or in emergency shelters, while at the same time, the very wealthiest people, billionaires, are becoming much richer, how does that happen? Is that a good thing? Some people say, well, that's the way life goes. You know, some people make it, some people don't. So it's not a question of the government, it's a question of who is in government, who influences government, who has real power in America? So I'll throw it out to you guys. Who has power? Does the average person who's working 50 or 60 hours a week try to pay the rent and buy food? Does that person have a whole lot of power over what goes on? As opposed to some, well, you tell me, I don't want to tell you. Who has thoughts on that one? Maybe Watson talks. Grace, you got any thoughts on that one? Who has power in America?
Um, I mean, everyone has their own type of power that they have in America. Um, it could be big or small. Um, you can have power over your own life and your decisions. But like the basic working person necessarily doesn't have a lot of power in what they can do. Um, and I think that kind of needs to change a little bit because everyone should have like an equal voice. Um, and I think that kind of needs to change a little bit because everyone should have like an equal voice to speak and change what they need.
More thoughts on power? Who wants to s- speak on that one? Thoughts? Uh, uh, okay, Sam, thoughts?
Um, I think money is definitely a huge part of that. I remember uh in my. Political science class that I took this year, um through the CCV Bennington Dual Enrollment Program they have for online, uh, we talked about. Basically finance in political, in uh. Politics is basically power coupons, you could say money is, and, you know, obviously. Raytheon is gonna be able to spend a lot more money than a teachers' union, you know, advocacy group, so that. You know, might be why education doesn't get as much funding as, you know, military contracts do. And that's a big problem, I think we have.
I don't want to proselytize to you, but I would check it out, research it. And find out about our campaign finance system and understand. That if somebody gave me a five-dollar bill and said, Bernie, here's five dollars, vote for this thing, that would be illegal. That person could go to jail. But if somebody decides to put fifty million dollars into a super PAC to help somebody run for office, perfectly legal. Does that make a lot of sense to you? Alright, so think about that. Alright, Katie, maybe one or two more questions?
Yeah, so Senator, we're gonna try taking one from the phone. Uh, so remember, folks on the phone, pay attention. Everyone's got an eight oh two area code. So we're gonna take this call from eight oh two seven seven nine. So if that's your phone number, Ryan's gonna bring you live, and you're gonna ask your question. Eight oh two seven seven nine, you should be live.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. So. My main concern is about climate change. And I was very excited when you guys first announced Build Back Better with its. Uh, regulations on the energy sector, and the news saying that it could. Bring us more than fifty percent to our, way to our goal of net zero emissions by twenty fifty. But then, two senators that you work with kept paring it down. Because one is in a very conservative state with many fossil fuel stocks and. A coal-rich state, and then Build Back Better. And it got stalled. So I want to know, how can. Or near your Vermonters. Contribute and make sure that the US doesn't create a climate disaster for future generations?
Um, thank you very much for that important question, and I know as somebody who's been all over the country. That climate change is on the mind and should be on the mind. Of younger people. There was just a piece on the front page of the Washington Post today. Talking about how we expect sea levels to rise by one foot. I think it's in the next thirty years, and flood coastal regions in America, and I expect all of the world. What the scientists tell us is that climate change is what we call an existential threat. Uh, to not only the United States, but the entire world. That means more droughts, worse food production, more floods, more extreme weather disturbances. More disease, more migration of people who are no longer able to live. In the communities they August to sell food or water, or land to grow their crops. Uh, it is a major, major crisis. Uh, we are unable to deal with it right now. It's not just two Democratic senators, and that's true. It is fifty Republican senators. Uh, it is the power of the fossil fuel industry, which in my view would rather make huge profits today. Than make sure that the planet that you and your children live in is healthy and inhabitable. But this gets the very, very deep political uh debate, and I have my views. And others' and my views are different than most, to be honest with you, and other people have their positions. But essentially, you are living in a country today. With massive income and wealth inequality. And where the people on top have not only all kinds of money. But they have, as a result of that money, a whole lot of political influence. We try to raise the minimum wage nationally to fifteen dollars an hour. Not a very radical idea. We couldn't do that because, you know, the restaurant industry may just back. We're trying to deal with climate change. The fossil fuel industry doesn't want to do that. We're trying to create healthcare for all people. Well, the insurance company doesn't want to do that. We're trying to lower the cost of prescription drugs. Pharmaceutical industry doesn't want us to do that. And on and on it goes. We're taking on real incredible power. People are prepared and able to spend hundreds and hundreds of millions' dollars. On lobbying, campaign contributions, advertising, et cetera. Uh, so to answer your question, I worry very much. Uh, about our inability to deal with climate in the United States and around the world. What should be happening. Is the United States, Russia, China, India, countries all over the world should be working aggressively together, helping each other. To lower carbon emissions. Is that happening right now? No, it is not. And this war that I worry about in the Ukraine will only make a bad situation worse. It'll make it harder for the international community to come together, which it has to. This is not just an American issue, it's a global issue. So I wish I'd give you a more optimistic uh perspective, but I can't. Uh, we are gonna continue to fight for Build Back Better, and among other things, I want you to know that. So I work hard on that, along with a number of members in the House and the Senate. We had a program in there called the Civilian Climate Corps, thirty billion dollars. To go primarily to young people, paying them good wages to get involved in helping us deal with climate. That means getting us involved in moving to sustainable energy. Uh, getting us involved in solar, in wind, uh, in making our homes more energy efficient. And we were having, our goal was and is to hire hundreds of thousands of young people to do that work at very good wages. And also educational benefits to help them go to college or pay off their student debt. So that's what we are working on. Whether we get there or not, we will see. Alright, Katie, maybe one more?
Yep, we'll take one last question, and our last question is gonna come from Jenna. Jenna, you're on with the group.
Tries to be active in government and wants to make a difference. I find that government and policy is really, really inaccessible for young students. So what is the best way you find to be involved in politics? And this is coming from someone who has been involved and tries to be involved and is in multiple groups working on. Bills and fighting for bills. I just find it's very inaccessible for. Average high school students, especially with everything else they have going on. So what would, do you find is the best way to be involved?
Well, I, I would say, uh, that one way to do it, you know, we are a small state. You know, one of the advantages of living in Vermont is that, you know, your elected leaders are pretty accessible. You know, they're not hiding behind twenty bodyguards and, you know. They are out there with the public, I think. Um, what I would do, and I don't think we do it enough, is. I was in high school and I was interested in what's going on in Vermont. I would invite my local representative. Uh, to the legislature, my state senator, my house member. To come to the high school and have a discussion with us, and they will come, unless I'm very mistaken. Uh, they would be more than delighted to come. And sit down with them, uh, ask them questions, get involved. Uh, you can go to schoolboy meetings, you know, or, you know, my feeling is that some of you. Have expressed similar feelings, as young people often don't have enough input into the, you know, decision-making. That impacts their lives in schools. Go to the schoolboy and say, you know what, hey? Uh, we want to talk to you. Here are five students, ten students, these are our concerns. Listen to us. Go to your local, you know, uh, city council, or, or, or whatever it may be, your Board of Select Persons, whatever it may be. Don't be afraid, don't be intimidated. And I suspect that while some of the local folks may be a little. Uh, nervous about it, I think most of them would say, hey, that's great, we have young people here. What's on your mind? And express your views. Uh, you live in a democracy, not, you know, one of the issues we're struggling with is. Yeah, there are some people in America who do not believe in democracy. I believe in democracy. And Vermont is kind of a grassroots democracy uh kind of state. So I would do that, you know, get on the phone, call up your legislature, say, come on into the school. These are the issues we want to talk to you about. Go to the schoolboy, go to the Board of Select Persons. That's a way to get started, and then, you know, go from there. Then work for President of the United States when you're thirty-five, that's all. Um, alright, Katie, you want to wrap it up?
Sure. Alright, that does it for this evening, folks. Thank you all for joining us. Uh, thank you to all of our panelists. Um, the adults we had on the line to help answer some questions. Uh, we really appreciate all of your time tonight, and again. As Senator Sanders mentioned, if there's anything our office can do to help. Please, we are just a phone call away. Um, our, our number is eight oh two eight six two. Eight, wow, I just forgot our own phone number, that's uh not good. Eight oh two eight six two eight six six eight. We really appreciate your time tonight, and uh thank you all for being with us. Have a great night.
Bye, everybody.